Audio test one, two.
I will call the meeting to order. First and foremost, welcome everybody to the new high school. This is our first time in the high school. So I will say this, Sean and I have worked out the best we can to use the dual systems here at the time. So I'm sure we will mess this up occasionally and it will be, it'll be off. We're gonna do. All right, how's now? Okay, better. So we'll work those problems out as they come and we'll try. So I would ask now if Stan, if you're able, enjoy me in the Pledge of Allegiance. So welcome, everybody. The first item on our agenda is public comment. We are still doing the online piece. So people are, if they're watching online, they can send a question in or comment in and Meg's gonna be in charge of that tonight. I would ask anyone who speaks tonight to just go to the microphone up the back there. So we're part of the recording. With that, does anyone wish to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, then I will move on. We will, of course, give people who are online a little bit more time as we go and I'll, Meg, you can speak up anytime you see anything. Does any school committee member wish to report anything? Oh, this is gonna be an easy meeting. So what was?
Hopefully.
So I'm gonna, our student rep is working tonight and unavailable. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the superintendent for the superintendent's report. Mr. Lynch, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the committee, members of the audience, welcome to the new Middleborough High School. Hope you found your way here. Once you find your way here, then you'll always know where it is. Under my report on the COVID-19 updates, I just want to give some updates on where we are. We have five programs going on in the school this summer and we are encouraging masks but not requiring masks as per the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Our plan for the fall at this point is still consistent with DEES guidance, which we've been working on under all along. And for the fall currently at this time, all health and safety guidance, including masking and physical distancing, will be lifted. We will collaborate with the Department of Public Health to issue any additional health and safety recommendations over the summer, should they become necessary. As you know, if you're aware of what's going on in the news, there's lots of discussion from the CDC, from Dr. Fauci, from a number of different sources about masking and the possibility of masking for students in the fall. We have not had any direction from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I was in attendance with the commissioner at a live audience last week at the superintendent's conference during which he said, right now, the understanding for Massachusetts is that the CDC guidelines are coming out and talking about sort of the mean in the country and notifying us that we are a state that's in a good place, Commonwealth is in a good place, and that they have not made decisions. And that was as of a week ago. If you heard the governor speak today, he spoke at a press conference in Sandwich. He did mention that he has no intention of reversing reversing current masking policies in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. He mentioned there were questions about specific communities, including Nantucket and Provincetown, and he said those communities can handle that as their own communities. He did not mention, as far as I'm concerned, what I saw of the conference, he did not mention schools. So at this point, we do not have any further guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. As it comes out, or as it is issued, we will need to revisit it as a committee. We will need to revisit perhaps an additional or another policy. We, as you know, at the last meeting on June 24th, we, you, the school committee rescinded the policy on masking. We're not sure if we need to revisit or if he's gonna keep the June 19th issue and what he said at that time, that masking, physical distancing will be lifted, if he's gonna keep that the same, or if he's gonna update us through Department of Public Health and Massachusetts through the CDC also. So that's the current update with regard to COVID-19. We have no outbreaks at all. We don't have any cases in the summer program. We did have a parent, but we were, did some close contact tracing, et cetera, and we worked that out. Paula Magnasco is working the summer in summer programs. So hopefully, we're on top of it. We think we're on top of it. I know the community has seen slight uptick, uptick. I think the latest number I saw was nine cases, current cases in the town of Middleborough. But as far as I know, at this point, according to all the documentation we have, we do not have any in any of our five summer programs, we do not have any positive COVID cases or we have not had any positive COVID cases. So that's sort of where we stand right now with COVID. Any questions from the committee or the audience certainly? You're welcome.
Any questions from committee members?
Mr. Oakley, you're on it.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. I just wondered, obviously, before, before we rescinded the mask policy, we had a specific way that we would handle close contacts. And I was wondering, has, has anything changed as far as contact tracing and close contacts goes with no masks?
We're still gonna have a waiting room. We are obviously going to continue to encourage masking. If people want to wear masks, they're certainly welcome to wear masks. We do have some people in our summer programs who are masking. Right now, that's a choice for them. But as far as the, what goes on in the fall, there will be, all social distancing will be lifted for the fall, according to the DEES guidelines. So that will not be required. So things will go back to quote unquote, normal, if you will, for the fall. That's the current intent. Again, if that changes, we have a meeting scheduled for August 26th. If that changes prior to, and there is a directive that will require a reopening plan that will include that and any guidelines and, and school committee decision on that. So we'll probably be meeting at some point with a 48-hour notice for folks, have an open meeting to discuss this further, once any further guidance comes out from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. I'm sorry, I say DEES a lot. That's the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. That's our governing body in the state for accountability and assessment and everything we do, really. So.
Mr. Chair, through you. Sorry, what I was really getting at was if there is an identified case, obviously, we had some pretty specific guidelines about like, you know, 15 minutes worth of contact and so-and-so distance. How do we handle it right now if we have a room of kids and we end up getting, I know there's not, but if we had one that was identified, how do we have to send them all?
There's a nurse in all of our programs, a student would be removed to the waiting room. And we do, we'd do some close contact tracing, definitely, with the parents involved and notify those parents.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair, we have a comment online. They're just asking if we go remote again, if we've gotten all the Chromebooks.
Have we gotten those? We did get, we did get the 2,000 Chromebooks, yes. Though we are in receipt of those. And if we go remote, we will be, we will, we will have the ability to go one-on-one with school devices. All the, all the students in the high school have a device. Students at Nichols Middle School will now be taking the devices back and forth to school. They can also bring their own. And there'll be 2,000 other Chromebooks in the district for, for use for other students. So we will have enough technology. Those Chromebooks that were supposed to come in last summer came in much later than they were supposed to, but we're, the technology department this summer, excuse me, is, is working on putting those together so that we can be in a good place for the fall, if need be. I, I don't anticipate, I hope that we don't, my intent is to, to open up our doors and welcome our students back. And, you know, this space was created for a sort of a non-pandemic environment, learning environment. I know that Mr. Mr. Brannigan is in the back of the auditorium. I know that he's desperately hopes that we can open up the school and how it was designed, because we did open up in April, as you know, the school and, and it was in COVID design, the cafeteria, the gym was used as a cafeteria. The cafeteria itself was, was spaced out and, and with desks in it as opposed to the furniture that was purchased, designed for that area. So all of those things being what they are, we just hope that, you know, people continue to mitigate, use mitigation strategies and vaccinate. We encourage, certainly encourage vaccination for 12 years and older students. It's not required. We're not requiring it as a school district at this point. We're encouraging it for faculty, obviously, but we can't account for that. And so that's where we're at as a district in terms of COVID, COVID update as of, as of today.
Any committee member have a question? Seeing no one. So this is, I had to miss the last meeting. So this is my first meeting in person since March of 2000. And so just to remind people, we, we try to be as inclusive as possible. We try to make sure that people, if they have questions, they can ask them. So if anyone has any questions, just let me know about, specifically about the COVID-19 guidelines. I'd ask that you go to the mic and just state your name and then say your question. Oh, he's gonna move around. So Sean's on the move tonight.
I'm Leah Machado. I'm on Pleasant Street. So we sent you guys a letter at the beginning of the week, asking you to commit to us that if guidelines change in the fall, which I would not be surprised if they do, that you will steadfast on your decision to keep the masks optional.
And I, so two things. One, we made that decision that the masks are optional already.
Correct. I'm asking you if you're gonna stay that way.
But unfortunately, I can't have the committee make a policy about something that's, that's not, that's, we don't know what's gonna happen. The, the June meeting, June, right? June meeting was the first time the committee had the opportunity to change the policy. Everything else was required by the state.
It's not required.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
Yes, it was. It was, it was a mandate by the state.
It's not a mandate. It's a guideline.
With all due respect.
Or whatever. You can call it a mandate. It doesn't matter. You don't make a law.
It was a mandate by the state that we were forced to do.
No, you're, so what is the purpose of the school committee then?
The school committee, we have certain powers to do certain things, and the state has certain things that they require us to do. The mask policy was a requirement from the state.
So if DESI or DESs or whatever you call it comes out in the fall and says, "We are requiring you to uphold mask mandates for K through 12," your ruling is gonna be to mandate masks.
We would have to, because there was a mandate. I apologize, and I don't wanna sit here and get in a fight. But the fact of the matter is, it was a mandate from the state that we were required to follow.
So what would you suggest that we do? Because we're not in agreement with that. We're the parents. They're our children. Do you want to be held personally responsible if something happens to one of our kids as a result of this policy?
I would ask, if you are concerned about a policy from the state, then I would ask you to talk to DESI.
I have talked to DESI, who tells me it's up to the school committee to decide the policies for the town. We've all talked to DESI.
And I've shown, we've sat here, well, we haven't sat here. We've sat through this entire year, as has every school committee across the state. That's why no school committee across the state could have a mask, a different mask. Everybody had to have a mask. It was required throughout the state.
It's your job to stand up for our children. That's what you're on the school committee to do. So you need to stand behind the parents and do what's right for our kids and support our decisions, our health decisions for our children. It's not up to you or any other agency in this state to decide for us, period.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mary, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi there. My name is Mary Stone. I live at 105, 171 Thompson Street, which is Route 105. I myself am a assistant teacher at a special ed school that operates in Middleborough. We have been face-to-face, because our population, per DESI guidelines, is a high-risk population. They don't do well in remote learning. We've been face-to-face since March, and we have pivoted back and forth between face-to-face learning and remote learning based upon having different people within our school community turn up as either positive COVID cases or close contacts out of an abundance of caution. And as a teacher, I just wanted to say, I appreciate the fact that you guys are listening to the science, listening to DESI, and I can't understand why it's such a problem to have children protected from each other's pathogens by wearing a mask. Masks work to prevent and to slow down the spread of a pathogen. We are now seeing the Lambda variant and the Delta variant becoming prevalent in the United States. We're seeing a trend that is disturbing. So I would hope that the school would listen to DESI and would listen to the CDC. And I would hope that people would understand that what we're trying to do is protect not only ourselves, but also your children by following these guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. So I saw, other people, any other questions or comments people wish to make? Please, ma'am, go right ahead. Go right ahead. Sean's moving a lot.
Hi, I'm Doe Churchill. I live on Long Beach Road. And I looked up the DESI COVID-19 guidance just today. And it does state that masks are mandatory. Okay. So I have a copy, if you'd like.
Thank you.
See what I pulled up? Oh, thank you. And anybody else that wants a copy is welcome to it. Thanks. So specifically, pardon my back, on page two, first bullet, it states that you have to have a mask if you're going to school. That's, that's just, you know, some people call it a guideline. It's a regulation that you guys have to abide by, which we are supposed to respect, right? So let me get to my notes here. Thank you for your patience. The, the fact that during the last meeting, which was June 24th, there were zero cases in Middleborough, which is great, right? That's probably because people were adhering to the mask mandate. But that changed after July 4th. However, the guidelines did not. We now have an uptick, like you stated. It doesn't just affect the school, it affects the whole community. Now, it's the board's responsibility to keep everyone safe in the community. Whoever thought you'd be put in that position, huh? So the school is a public place governed by a very high safety guideline that, according to the state, will be expected to be enforced to ensure the safety, first, of our most precious commodity, our children, and also ensures that the schools are doing the best by their community as well. It's a governed public space that gets funded publicly. You, the board, are put into place to regulate and enforce the rules. It's not a private school or a shopping center or some other entity that's allowed to make its own rules, get their own risk. No, it's an important position you hold. We, the whole town, depends on your accuracy and perseverance in implementing these regulations. We depend on that. We depend on you. The kids depend on you. This board is ultimately responsible and must abide by the guidelines set forth here by the Mass DESI. There are no choices here. It's public safety. The fact that, one, cases have risen due to the new variant, and, two, only 49% of the community has been vaccinated, and, three, those who have been vaccinated are catching it with little to no symptoms and spreading it indiscriminately. The success of the vaccine is dependent upon stopping the spread. Masks are an archaic, yes, and it's most dependable tool we have in the spread, stopping the spread. This is the reason the requirements laid out here by the Mass DESI is the only resource this board has. As you know, numbers don't buy. It's very black and white. I'm confident this board will continue the protocol that is written and required in this most recent regulation. We are all going to have to buck up. We can't go afford to go backwards. The kids need and depend on your good decisions that are going to, one, keep them healthy, and, two, in school. It's really a daunting task. I'm sure no one could have imagined you would ever be in a school board dealing with this, right? It can be easy. It can't be easy, but we are here to support you and your decisions. Thank you for being here and hearing all of us tonight.
Ma'am, just so you understand, the, the piece of paper that you gave me, the DESI guidelines is of May 27th, 2021.
Right.
On the night of June 19th, which is a Saturday night, the commissioner and DESI sent out a new notice. At that time, it allowed for summer programs and for the fall.
And that was, that was June?
June 19th.
June 19th. And then?
And that allows the, the masks to be optional.
And that was also before the uptick in cases?
Correct.
Okay. So that could ultimately change again?
I don't know that.
Okay. But my, my point is that I think we need to, this is still in flux, and we need to be ever vigilant and continue and support the school board in their decisions because health is a priority to the whole community, not just, not just the kids or the teachers or the, or the kids' parents, but the whole community. The whole community depends basically on what you decide here. And that's my point.
No, no problem. I just wanted to make sure that people understood that that.
Yeah, I would love to have a copy of the June 19th report.
Yes, I do.
Okay, awesome.
We can give that to you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, do you have a question or a comment, please?
Hi, Peg Zapula, 120 Rivers Edge Drive. I have twins at the high school. And first of all, I want to say to you guys, thank you for everything you've done. Before you had to do masks, my daughter came home sick in December. Nobody's been able to tell us it's COVID. It went through my house for three months. I actually spent 24 hours in bed with a fever of 105 because she was so sick, she ended up getting everybody else sick. Two months ago, I buried my aunt from COVID. If a mask is gonna keep my daughters from getting COVID again, and one of my daughters has asthma real bad, actually ended up with pneumonia, I'm okay with a mask. I just hope that we're able to keep our children in the school because I know that my daughter learns better in the school system than remotely. But whatever you have to do, we're for 100% what you guys say we need to do because you got our kids back, and that's what matters. And Mr. B has our kids' backs, as I'm sure all these other kids do, teachers do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Comments online?
There were a couple. Someone did mention for the kids that have their vaccination, should they have to wear a mask or shouldn't have to wear a mask? So basically dividing the students. Thought that was an interesting point that should be discussed.
Did anyone have a comment or a question? Please go right ahead.
Hi, Heather Lee Bowens from Simmon Ridge Circle, Middleborough. I think that what we're most concerned with, I think, is that we know so far that Baker is saying that he has no intention of doing that. He can obviously change his mind. I think that what we're concerned about is the fact that we do have communities and school boards within our own towns so that we can take care of our own children and not have the unknown masses of people that are not even connected to us or our kids make decisions for us. I think it's very well-known, if people want to talk about following the science and the data, that young children have not been the ones getting COVID like that, having symptoms, spreading COVID among the masses. That's well-known factual data, okay? But yet, we are still here having conversations about masking our youngest people for something that they're not giving to other people in the masses. And we can go to ballgames, we can sit next to each other wherever we want to, and we are the ones spreading, the older ones. Vaccinations are widely available for anyone over 12. So if they have the vaccinations, they shouldn't be worried about anybody else anyway. You know, it's very arbitrary, these rules that have been going on in the past year about who's allowed to do what, who's allowed to go where. And it always comes down to the population that the state can control the easiest, because people, many people, do not have the option, like I do, of homeschooling my children. Most people don't. So they have to put their kids in school, and they have to follow. And the state knows that. They know that they can control this population because it's a free education, okay? Yes, I homeschool my kids, but two of them have special needs, and they do require going to the school for speech, for reading, and things like this. I use the school as a resource. And I'm concerned that the special needs population is going to be the ones to suffer the most because they are the ones that can't wear masks or can't get vaccinated. And then what say you about that population of people? Because I will tell you one thing, last year, I sent to the nurse of the MECC a letter for my son from his doctor saying that he was not required to wear a mask because of his disability. Do you know he came home from school every single day wearing one? I did not send him with one. And they had a letter knowing that from a doctor. So my biggest concern is with the special needs community, that they are gonna be the ones to be left behind if DESI is the one that decides to rule over the whole state, whereas the governor isn't even planning on doing that. I want to know that our town and our school committee will be the ones to stand up for us and our kids, to have it be up to the parents, what they think is best for their kids. Thank you.
Other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I just wanted, I believe we did have a provision in our policies that allowed for, for exemptions based on special needs for masking. Is that right?
We did. It has to, because.
Right. And I'm sorry to hear that, and it shouldn't have been, it sounds like. But also, I had a second point, too. I think it was stated just now that kids can't, you know, don't get it, they, they don't suffer from it. But even as, okay, but you said unlikely. Okay. I mean, even as recent as a month and a half ago, kids under 19 were the highest, largest group of cases in Massachusetts for COVID-19. I mean, I think that can't be forgotten. And I also think that there are a number of studies out right now looking at long COVID symptoms in children. And it's a real thing. Earlier in 2020, we were told they can't, you know, they can't get it, they're not carriers, they won't pass it to people, they won't get sick. I just don't think that's true. And the more we learn about these things, I think they are at risk. And I, and I think no matter which side of this we stand on, I think I can agree that, that you are sticking up for the kids just as much as I am sticking up for the kids. At least we can share that in common, even if we have a different approach to it. But I, I just wanted to make sure that I at least brought up that point, that that's not exactly the case anymore.
Sir, go right. You're gonna need to use the microphone if you want to talk, but I'm gonna go, go right ahead.
Okay. My name's, should I stand or CD?
No, you can do whatever you'd like.
Oh, thank you. My name's Paul Casimian. I'm Pendleton Court in Middleborough. My name's Paul Cassimian, I'm Pendleton Court in Middleborough. And I guess first, you know, I really appreciate you guys. This has been a very polite, courteous conversation, and I really appreciate everyone doing that. And I certainly understand that emotions can run high. I have kind of a simple opinion. I, I think you should not commit, regardless of whether you can or not, and I understand your position is, I would never want the school committee to commit to make a decision about the future on facts you don't have. So regardless of one's position on something, it would scare me if you were to say, regardless of what the facts are in a month, regardless of whatever the facts are in six months, we're committing to something. Because some people have an opinion, and obviously, if the facts haven't developed, you can't say your opinion's based on the facts because you don't have the facts. So I would never want the committee to commit to making any decision, especially concerning the health and safety of the children or the faculty and staff, based on facts you don't have. And any agreement or decision you make about September or November, or November twenty twenty-five, should probably be based on the facts that you can have. So that's my first point, regardless of the perspective on this. Second, I do think it's good for you to hear different views. And if, I really appreciate the concern that we should all have for all students. And on one level, we have to look at the fact that some people have opinions about masking, and I understand that. I'm kind of a moderate guy. I don't really have a strong opinion on masking in the abstract. I just, I just don't. What I will say is I find it interesting that people talk about the rights of children and the health of children. And I want to speak up for the children who, maybe they want to wear a mask, and decisions are being made by other people to expose them to risks that they don't get to make now. So it is more complicated. When you say speaking up for children, I just think it's fair to say, it's not as simple as saying, let's just acknowledge everyone's rights. Because this is, this is a communicable disease. So it's not as simple as just saying, we have the right to do whatever we want. And I was taught a long time ago that my right to swing a fist ends at someone else's face. And I think we just got to keep in mind that this is a communicable disease. It has killed six hundred thousand Americans. It's not a joke, it's not nothing. And all, my only opinion is, listen to the D E C guidance and make decisions based on actual facts and science. And other than that, I've got nothing else to say other than I really appreciate what you guys do because I think it's a really hard job. And I respect your professionalism, your courtesy, and the fact that you're taking this very seriously and thinking about it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Go right ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Paul, very well said. My name's Kristin, I'm on Miller Street. And I basically just want to say that there's no one-size-fits-all with this. Everybody has different opinions, everybody has different thoughts on what's best for their kids. Every kid is different. There's no saying masking everybody and making everybody do this is correct. There's no saying, take the masks off everybody. You know, there's people that want to wear them, and I respect that. I don't want to wear a mask, I don't want my kids to. But if you choose to, go ahead, that's fine with me. I think there needs to be a middle ground where, you know, it's not just one way. There's, there's multiple different opinions in this, and there's lots of different science supporting really anything you want to support. So making people forced into doing something that they don't want to do is tough. Either way, I mean, there needs to be a balance where everybody can feel heard and everybody can feel like their kid is safe. And I don't know necessarily what that answer is, but there are other things, you know, there's kids that get sick from COVID, but there are kids struggling with mental health. I've said this the last meeting, and I'll probably say it every meeting. I lost somebody to suicide in November, twenty-two years old. I guarantee you, he's not the only one this year. There were a ton of kids this year that passed that way. And that's something that needs to be thought of when you're masking your kid and you're, you're making them afraid of everything. We need to consider their mental health. I don't know if you've checked with the town, if you've checked into like putting kids into a program and getting them help with mental health, but it's nearly impossible. So the numbers on that are skyrocketing. And that needs to be considered when you're making these decisions. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ma'am, I'll go to you next, go ahead.
Hello, my name's Ashley from Maple Road. And first off, I want to say thank you. And then I did have a question. If it does change to masks being mandatory, is there an option for students and parents who decide not to have their child masked for remote option? Is that something that you would be looking into?
So currently, right now, there is no remote option. The state has ended the remote option. But again, right now, the mask policy, if you will, right now, is it's up to people to decide whether or not their children wear masks. I can promise you this. If the state comes down with new guidelines or new mandates, we will have a separate meeting just on masking alone. It won't be necessarily be part of the school committee, a regular school committee meeting. It will be a discussion about that policy and what it means. So as of right now, there is no remote learning piece.
And I only ask-
It's just homeschool.
I only ask because I have two special needs children. And one of them is in services over the summer. And he has been going for one whole month unmasked for speech. And his speech has moved boundaries. I mean, he went from, you couldn't understand him, to being able to hold a conversation. And I just feel as if the mask was removed earlier, we would already be doing these things. And, you know, my other special needs daughter prefers to wear her mask. So I like that it is an option. But again, many people had said, you know, it's on you guys. Unfortunately, it's not where the parents. But I love that you guys are listening to both sides. And I just don't want those kiddos who have been struggling because they're stuck behind a mask to continue. So it's definitely not one-size-fits-all. And I just really hope going further that we can see that.
Thank you very much. We're going to you.
So do you want to do some online comments?
Yeah, we'll do her and then I'll do her.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Hannah Callaton. I'm on Vernon Street. And I didn't go to Middleborough schools. I only went to Middleborough schools up until middle school. But as far as special needs and mental illness, is there any way you guys think you can do maybe more one-on-one or group techniques for, for people that have their, you know, issues with, you know, speech pathology programs, mental illness programs, anything that's going to help people still do well, you know, while doing not remote? Because you said you can't do remote. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your question. We do have some federal money that has come our way through, obviously, through, through federal government and Department of Education nationally. And that is going to support some additional folks in our community, in our school community, who are going to help out with this, help out with coordination. We have a school adjustment counselor in, in buildings, in each building. We've, this grant will add one, a half a one at the, at the MECC. This grant will add a coordinator who will coordinate all the social, emotional piece and the whole counseling piece in our district at the school level. So this federal money that's coming in is going to allow us to do some things that you mentioned and add some things to our school system that we haven't had before with specific reference to, to what you're talking about.
And, you know, I do support the mask mandate, but like, for people who cannot wear it for health reasons, I know my grandmother can't wear one. Like, for, for example, for her to go to her speech pathology because she had a stroke, like, is there any way they can put up, like, you know, boundaries, like, anything like that? That way, no one's still not exposed, if that makes sense. They're still not exposed to the disease, just like you guys were talking about, the cafeteria being separated and everybody is six feet away.
We're not going to require social distancing at this point for next year, but we will have PPE and-
Well, as it updates, as it updates, correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Do other people have questions or comments they wish to make? Seeing no one, I'm going to move on with it. Oh, I don't want to miss you, go right ahead, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Bridgette. I'm new to this community, so sorry, and I'm late, so I may be repeating other people's concerns. I just wanted to express my concern that I don't support or encourage any more of the rules or restrictions we've had in the past year. I think it's time, everybody needs to move on, and it needs to be a choice. Anybody's personal choice who wants to wear a mask can wear a mask and distance. They can not enroll their children in extracurriculars that they don't want to do. But everybody else who wants to move forward needs to recognize that this virus is here, and it's going to continue to be here. And so we need to learn to live with it, and we need to return to normal living. And that means allowing children to breathe freely, to communicate freely, and to engage in social interactions freely. As a healthcare worker who worked through this pandemic, I saw coronavirus patients. I do not support masking children whatsoever. This has been an experiment. You can discuss whether there's study that says this, study that says that, but the bottom line is, you have no evidence that masking reduces viral transmission in the schools because you don't have a controlled population. So unless you have a controlled population, our children were forced to participate in an experiment. And that experiment shows no evidence that there was any difference in any sort of viral transmission. But we do know that there wasn't a lot of viral transmission in the schools. We do know that children aren't severely affected by this illness, and they don't have severe morbidity or mortality. It is unreasonable to expect them to do something to protect adults. Adults are here to protect children and not the other way around. So we should not be masking them. We should not be expecting them to take medical interventions that are against their will or against their religious belief or against any, any experimental product that they don't otherwise want. So I don't encourage any of the restrictions or rules to move forward. I think that we need to move forward and allow people to make choices. And if their choice is to mask their child, I respect that. If their choice is to vaccinate their child, I respect that. And everybody else should respect everybody's choice on what their individual health issues are that drive their decisions, their experiences, their education, and their understanding of what is going on should be respected. I don't expect you to make a different decision for me, and I don't expect you to expect me to make a different decision for you or for your loved one or for whomever you think is immunocompromised. Because everybody has a loved one. And everybody can make a reason that this one's immunocompromised or that one's immunocompromised. If you are truly immunocompromised, that you are risk for death from this disease, you were the one that needs to stay home and be locked down and quarantined. Otherwise, the rest of the healthy people in this healthy population need to move about the community freely.
Meg, I want to go to online, Meg. So whatever you have online.
So it's pretty much echoing here. There's a lot of people that support the mask mandate. There's also a lot of people that support the choice. There were a couple of specific questions. A lot of people are asking if we could kind of table the conversation until the next meeting or until more guidance comes out. And then, there was one. I just have to find it, sorry. Comments about homeschooling. There was a question about if we could create a remote option, even if D E C doesn't require that.
In order to create a remote option, you would have had to be a part of something else that D E C put out. We weren't. They don't have, you don't have remote options currently as a, a school system. We're not allowed, according to D E C.
And I think, I think that's it.
Okay.
I'll go to you because you had your hand raised, so please, Sean, can you get the microphone?
Thanks, Sean. Dave Doherty Whispering Pines. I just, riffing on that experiment idea, in September, we're going to start another grand experiment. We're going to put all of our little people into rooms with no social distancing and no mask mandate. And I'm just glad that D C, CDC, and you guys are going to be there to react to it if that experiment grows poorly. The Delta variant is clearly hitting people in a younger age group. It's getting them more sick more quickly. And there is a big component in the town that is glad that we are sticking with science and CDC guidelines.
So I'm going to move on to the next agenda item, but I just want to reiterate to everybody this, that again, our next meeting is August twenty-sixth. If new guidance comes out from the state, especially with regard to masking, we will hold a separate meeting earlier so that people can be part of that and have a discussion about that. That's my commitment to what happens moving forward. And with that, I'll ask the superintendent to continue with this. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I have a guest here tonight remotely, from Maine, I believe. She's on vacation. Mrs. Heidi Latenda is the principal of the John T. Nichols Middle School. And she is here, as you know, through the last contract negotiations. We agreed with the association to take a look at both the middle school and the high school schedules and agreed to put committees together at both schools where teachers would have equal input and that we would talk about changes that our school principals and these committees feel are in the best interest of the schools and the children in the schools. Mrs. Latenda met with the group last year and changed the schedule, tweaked the schedule, the old schedule. And now she wants to go even further with some additional proposed changes to the committee, and she wants to introduce, introduce those tonight. Mrs. Latenda, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to give you the floor, Heidi.
Yes, I can hear you.
I know you've been sitting there patiently, so.
Now, thank you very much. Good evening, School Committee Chair, Mr. Young, Superintendent Lynch, school committee members, and all our audience members and our Middleborough families out there watching. But I'd like to thank you for the opportunity for giving me the chance to present to you some proposed changes to our schedule for this coming year. I met with a committee last Monday and last Tuesday. Some of those committee members were the same members that I had the year prior. I think it was a year ago, this time, that we proposed the new schedule. And we are going to build off of that schedule. That is our goal. Our goal is to provide the best learning opportunities for our students. And we continue to assess our needs as a school and work to find ways to make our schedule optimal for student learning and achievement engagement with a big focus on building those student relationships. And I think this will help us accomplish those things. So if we could switch to the first slide with the current schedule?
Mrs. Latenda, if you can hear me, if you could speak just a little slower.
So currently, our-
Just a little slower, it might be a little bit better.
So our current schedule has six periods. And each period is fifty minutes long. And we have a six-day rotating schedule. That's what we have had this year. We eliminated the drop day from the old schedule. We added a morning extension block, which was about thirty-nine minutes right after morning arrival. We also had three lunches and then a five minute room at the end of the day. That is what our schedule looks like this year. Our proposed schedule for the coming school year would be to reduce our day-five-period daily schedule with four academics and one unified art class. The four academics would be math, science, social studies, English language art. And that would be one ELA class instead of having ELA one and ELA two. We would extend our periods to fifty-eight minutes opposed to fifty minutes. We will continue to have no drop day. And we are extending our morning extension block to fifty minutes from thirty-nine minutes. This will allow special education services to happen and also for our band, orchestra, and chorus students to have that opportunity to engage in music during the morning extension block. That is why we increased the fifty, the thirty-nine minutes to fifty minutes. We will maintain three lunches. We are looking to see if we can make four lunches. That will be to be determined. And we will have a four-minute homeroom at the end of the day. These changes would be budget neutral. And it's based on staff who have retired or resigned. And it's based on staff who have retired or resigned. This is a sample schedule. We would have our extension block in the morning. Our arrival time is 7:35 to 7:55. And then we would have extension block. And then you can see we have period one, period two. And then the middle of the day is an hour and a half block, 90 minutes. That's where we will have all three lunches. So one grade will have lunch first, and then another grade will have it second in the middle of a 90-minute block. And another class or another grade will have lunch at the last block. We will have a total of five periods, a 30-minute lunch, a 50-minute extension block, and a four-minute homeroom. Next slide, please. These changes will allow us to have three teams for seventh and eighth grade with a class size about 21 to 22. These would be four-person teams instead of five. And this will allow us to have about 84, 85 students per team opposed to 120 students per team. We will still maintain two teams for sixth grade. The class size will be about 25, 26 students. The incoming fifth-grade class going to be sixth graders is a low enrollment of 215 students, Our academics, as I mentioned earlier, will be English Language Arts, Math, Science, Social Studies, and Unified Arts Class, which is physics, art, music, health, library, media. And we'll maintain that 30-minute lunch. And added this year through Mrs. Lyons was our new position for Special Education Support Specialist. And that person will be helping our special ed teachers and working with them to enhance our co-teaching and our special ed instruction, instructional model. So these are the changes based on a new schedule. Continued changes will also include adding a literacy coach position. At the elementary level, they have coaches that were trained through Leslie University. It's their literacy model. We currently have a staff member at Nichols Middle School being trained as a Leslie literacy coach. And we're going to have her be an interventionist and coach to support our changes and structures that we want to put in place for our E L A department. We will also have an open unified arts position, which would focus on creative writing, journalism, argumentative writing. You may have heard or remember that our M C A S scores across the district, especially in writing, do need some work. And this could be a good focus area for students to engage in additional writing through our U A trimester period throughout the year. In addition, we would have a swing math teacher in grade six, which we currently already have. But the goal would be for more targeted intervention to help close the gap for the loss of learning because of COVID and because of the different situations and learning situations students have been in. And that swing math teacher would support both teams on the sixth grade. Next slide. So our benefits would be longer periods for each content area. It also would be one less transition for our students. And also, students will be focusing on one less content area. There'll be smaller class sizes, more opportunities to build student relationship, and to get to know our students as learners and to better provide differentiated instruction. Our team student enrollment would be 35 to 25 less students on a team with this new model. And then we also will have coaching to support our English Language Arts initiatives. And we'll build a new structure to our E L A department across all grade levels. And we'll begin to be implementing readers and writers workshop. And it's a consistent model with our elementary schools. The needs, based on the shuffle that I was able to configure, we would post that literacy coach position. We would hire a .5 music teacher. Beth Ann Young did retire. And we would hire a .5 instead of a full music teacher. We would need to hire two social studies teacher and hire two science teachers. This would be budget neutral, would not cost the district any additional money. One position, half a position would be funded through a grant, Title I grant. And we would assign and educate it to an open U A for literacy and creative writing. And for historical data purposes, if you look at our E L A M C A S data over the past three years, not last year because we were in COVID situations and students did not test in 2020. If you look at sixth grade, there's a combined exceeding and meeting score of 40% for 2019. But in 2018, they were at 46%. And then in 2017, they were 44%. And then you can see seventh grade follows a similar pattern as well as eighth grade. My point of showing this data is to share with you that whatever we've been doing has not been working as well as it should. And we need to restructure what we're doing and refocus and rethink how to do things and do it better. So we can best support all students and all learners to increase student achievement. And the goal is to streamline our structures of tier-one instruction. What does that look like at Nichols Middle School? What are the expectations across all content areas? And we need to have our E L A departments have a common structure throughout each grade level, which has not happened in years. So that's our E L A data. And then our math data is on the next slide. And math follows a similar pattern. 2019, sixth-grade math was 38%, then 47%, then 44%. We do need more support in math. And we, by adding 58-minute period, every content area gets more time and more instructional time. And one isn't more important than the other, but they do all support one another across all content areas. And we'll have four-person teams where the teachers can really get to know each other and get to know our students. And we are shuffling the deck a bit at Nichols Middle School. And it's about doing what's best for our students and building our student growth and student achievement and getting to know our students. As someone mentioned in the audience earlier about social-emotional learning, that's a huge factor in what we focus on at Nichols Middle School. And there are a lot of great things already in place, as Mr. Lynch already alluded to. So this is some information I'd like to share with you. And if anyone has any questions, please feel free to ask. Thank you very much for giving me the time to share this proposed schedule with you.
Thank you, Mrs. Latanda. Any questions from the committee?
So Heidi, just a couple of things. One is when you say current schedule, this schedule has really only been in place because your group came together and developed the current schedule, correct?
Are you asking about the proposed schedule?
No.
Mr. Young?
The current schedule that you're using now came also from this group, correct?
That is correct, yes. And we had additional members this year, which was awesome. Our first meeting had about 13 staff members. We also had a couple of special ed coordinators join us. And we also had, our second meeting, we had about nine or 10 staff join us with special education teachers and coordinators representing as well.
And just so the committee understands, these committees were formed as part of negotiations. There is one at the high school and one at the middle school. They were to look at the schedule and put together a plan, which this group had done. But it was never our intention for these committees to go away. These committees would still remain living, if you will, because we thought it was important that they look at what was the pluses and minuses and be able to adapt. So in my mind, this is exactly what we asked this committee to do when we formed it, was to make sure that it adapted and changed as it was working out the kinks, if you will, for the schedule to be able to come back and say, let's try something new. Can you let us know, Heidi, how the rest of the committee feels about this?
Well, this was a unanimous vote. I guess what happened at our meeting is they all said, well, what are the negatives to this schedule? Because there were so many positives. You know, and their biggest concern was that no one would lose a job. And we need all of our teachers and we need to do the best we can with what we have to make it work and provide the best learning experience for our students. So there really weren't any negatives other than people being shuffled around. It may not like change, but they know that at the cost of supporting all students and making a better environment for them, that was our main goal.
Thank you, Heidi. Anyone else have questions? Meg, I saw you.
I just have a concern with the 26 kids in sixth grade per class. That seems like a lot. Is that higher or lower than what it is now?
Yes. So we do have 25 to 26 students, but some of our, we have four sub-separate programs. Mrs. Janess, and some of our students will not be part of the homeroom population depending on their programming. So those numbers could be down. I just don't have that number for you at this time. I could look it up for you. Also, with having that swing math teacher, that will help reduce the math class sizes. So when their classes, math classes each period of the day, students will be pulled from each team's math class, which will reduce the math class sizes.
Okay, and then I have another question.
I was not able to.
Sorry.
Based on the staff we have, I was not able to make it work to have three teams.
Okay. And then with the, with the loss of the second E L A block, how do you guys plan on making up for that?
Well, really, a lot of the standards overlap. And, I'm sorry. So a lot of the standards overlap and each grade and each team kind of had their own structure in how they did things. And through the Leslie literacy model, we are streamlining, sorry, streamlining what we are doing so that we have more consistency. And we are going to be implementing readers and writers workshop. And I'm working with the literacy coach that we, the new literacy coach we have in the district with our English teacher in our seventh grade, who's getting trained to develop those structures. So with all those new things in place and different expectations that are the same across the entire school, the goal is to see more student achievement across all content areas for all of our students.
Great, thank you.
They will not miss any of their standards.
We'll do those right after. I want to make sure the committee. So Rich, you had a question to write in.
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mrs. Latanda, for the presentation. It seems to me like there's no downside. I mean, like you said, it's budget neutral, there's less transitions, more time on subjects, and the rolling schedule will kind of handle the class diversity issue with cutting down a block in the day, it sounds like. My question, though, on the committee and the schedules that were created, number one, how long has the existing schedule been in place? And number two, if moving to the new, actually, this applies to the old schedule as well, the old or the new, what are the metrics besides M C A S scores to figure out if this is working sooner?
So the schedule that we have now, prior to the proposed schedule, has only been in place for a year during the COVID year. I did do a survey with staff, and I think I sent it to them in January, February to get feedback. And it was overwhelmingly positive about the new schedule. Teachers feel like the building has settled. Students are doing a great job with transitions. There's less discipline issues and concern. There are a lot of structures we put in place to settle the building. That was the ultimate goal, that students weren't coming in and given five minutes to transition to a new, the next class. We want students to come in, get organized, settle themselves, and have an opportunity to get organized and then transition to their content area classes. So the new schedule has worked out really well. The structure of the new schedule will stay the same, other than reducing one of the blocks and adding 58 minutes for each content area opposed to 50 minutes for each content area. And what was the other question, Ms. Dan? I mean.
Yeah, it was in terms of, in terms of metrics, to figure out if this is working, is it, is really the major metric, the M C A S data that you'll get? Or do you have some kind of in-between metrics that will help?
Well, we have a lot of metrics that we measure student growth by and also just surveys from our staff and our families and our students. And it just, any of our common assessments that we have, informative and informal assessments. And just by the gauge of the pulse of the building and the atmosphere of the building, there are a lot of different metrics that we use to see how things are working. And it's a lot of feedback. And just observing and being part of the building and walking around and seeing the pulse of the building and getting the feedback from not only our staff, but our students and even community members that come into our school. And along with the real analytical data that we get from common assessments, department data, and just grade-level reports.
Okay, that's excellent. Thank you. And I think if I heard right, the schedule that's in place right now was kind of to settle things down, give the kids in the middle school something to kind of hold on to. And this is kind of a graduation of that schedule towards something more perfect. Is that, is that about right?
Thank you, yes. That's a good way to put it. The former schedule before I became a principal at Nichols Middle School had a rotating schedule and a drop day. And even the teachers and students, they were saying they would always have to look at the schedule to see what would come next or what their day was like. And I felt like that was very unsettling, especially for adolescents. I'm sorry. Especially for adolescents. So we had to settle the building down and create a schedule that was more consistent for students to get ready for their day.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the committee?
Thank you.
Meg, did you have questions?
Yeah, I think I asked some of the questions that were online, but one that I didn't ask was, what, can you elaborate a little bit more about what happens during the extension block for kids that are not in chorus, band, or orchestra?
Sure. During extension block, we have character strong that happens during the week. We also have intervention that takes place. We have students who make up work or go visit another teacher. It looked different this year because of COVID and we couldn't have students travel everywhere. And I have a small S E L committee, Social Emotional Learning Committee, that's been working with me. And we're planning on putting more structures in place for that extension block. So it's really about the team working together to figure out what day do we shift students into different content areas so they can get extra help and additional support as needed or enrichment. And also, it is about building their social-emotional learning skills and organizational skills. So we have a lot of plans and ideas to make that happen and use that time more wisely. As in the past, that used to be the dial period, and we want to just put more structures and routines in place so students, we all know what students are and what accountability is.
Great, thank you.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions?
This is Heather Lee Bowens, Cinnamon Ridge Circle, Middle Borough. I was just curious, I'm not familiar with the Leslie model intervention for the E L A. My daughter receives one-on-one Wilson services there. And I don't know, are you guys dropping that with this new proposal or how does that work? And I was also wondering if the teacher she currently has for Wilson is the one being trained for this new model.
So Wilson is specialized programming, which teachers are trained in that. All our E L A teachers are not trained in Wilson. That's a specific program. And the Wilson program is not embedded in this Leslie literacy model. And I know students may receive that, those services through their I E P or different means. So it can be embedded within the day because it's really about foundational reading skills and differentiation. And with our readers writers workshop model, it helps to build differentiation more than what we're doing now. And it also helps to build. And it also helps to build student agency and driving their own learning. And that is the goal of embedding this new model into our, our ELA department at Nichols Middle School.
So the Wilson won't be dropped or will be dropped? I'm sorry.
Hi, Mrs. Latander. I think the question was during that 50 minute block in the morning. During that 50 minute block in the morning, is that an opportunity for her child to get Wilson? Language read, uh, instruction during that time?
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So we have, um, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Our, uh, we do have language-based classrooms where they get additional ELA support and that 50 minute period in extension block will help support that.
Thank you.
Other questions?
It'll be an opportunity for the, for the, for that additional.
Hearing none, then the chair would entertain a motion to approve the schedule change for the middle school.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. Anyone in the audience have anything they wish to say? Seeing none. Anything online, Meg?
Nope.
Again, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Latander, and thank you for taking part.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Time out of your vacation in Maine to be joining us. We do appreciate it.
Enjoy your vacation, Heidi.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it. If you have any questions, give me an email or call.
As, as Mrs. Latander signs out, I just want to say selfishly, as the parent of a seventh grader, I'm happy that my child will be going from a team of 26 or 27 students into a team of 21 students. Having a child that is currently involved in band and chorus, uh, I'd like the fact that those going from 38 or 37 minutes to 50 minutes, those blocks in the morning. It actually reboots the arts. We're trying to do that in the district. Last year, the arts really suffered, um, and I think we need to reemphasize them. And this is a nice way of doing that. So, uh, that's again, as, as a parent, I think that that is a couple of sort of points that I wanted to make that, that I think are very attractive about this new schedule. I realize that there's one less ELA block in the day. But the extension of 58 minutes, the ability of that teacher to get to know those 21 students now, less, fewer students to really get to know them and make those connections that we've been talking about are just so important. And I just, uh, I really think that this, this, this schedule is in a better place. And, and if she after this year wants to revisit this and, and relook at some of these things, then I think we should entertain her again next year if that's the case. So.
Mr. Chair.
Just also to add, I think it sort of sets them up for high school too, where, where they're getting this kind of acclamation to a schedule that looks a little bit more like when they head, head off to high school. I think that's a very good thing to be happening. So I definitely think it's great.
Mr. Chair, if there's nothing else on that schedule from anybody in the audience, I will continue with my report. I wanted to provide you with some updates on school choice. As you know, as I informed the committee back in June, at the June meeting, uh, the time allotment for the open session came and went. We did have a lottery. We did fill those positions. Now the time is about those parents who have a school choice slot have to register. And make that final decision. In some cases, people put in for the lottery to have another option. So then sometimes they go back to their children and say, hey, you're going to Middleborough next year. And the student might say, uh, no, I don't think that's a good idea for me, uh, perhaps. And so we are waiting for those. We know that four of those students that we had for school choice have now opted out. So that's the current number as of today. Uh, we have another open window coming up in August. Uh, I know that we have a student at the high school whose voice concerns that her parents are moving and she's a rising senior and she wanted to stay at the high school. That'll be an opportunity for her to apply during that time. So there'll be an additional window, uh, that'll be announced and will be posted for those parents who are interested in, in school choice. There's very few slots that are open. There might be two or three available at the elementary level. There might be a couple at the middle, middle school level and possibly a couple more at the high school. So, uh, not, not too many, but that's just an update on where we are, uh, with school choice. So. And I would, I would also say that, um, we did just get the foundation budget numbers from the state, uh, which includes a, a number of $266,000 plus coming back to the school district. And as you know, those folks that were on the budget sub, but budget policy, a budget subcommittee know that as we looked at this, to get some of our additional positions that the, that the principals wanted, we were able to use school choice money to pay for those. So that is a big factor in some of these decisions that the school committee has made. There is definitely a, a balancing act. So.
Mr. Oakley, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. Through your, Mr. Chair to Mr. Lynch, uh, I believe you've explained this before, so I apologize if it's a repeat, but the, the student that you mentioned that's at the high school now that, um, whose parents will potentially be moving out of district, they, they do get precedence in some way since they're already students. Is that right or?
They do not.
Uh, okay.
They do not. If their parents move out of town, they're just like any other school choice student from any other community. And if there are seven people for five slots, there'd be a lottery. If there are five people for five slots, there would not need to be a lottery.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
And just to be clear, it used to be was essentially called senior privilege. If you, if you went to a school system throughout your lifetime, your senior year, you would be guaranteed a slot in the high school. That has since gone away. So, um, that's another reason we talked about establishing choice because Paul would consistently have things happen with students in their lives, um, that would require them to move someplace else. Um, and this allowed them to finish their schooling in, in Middleborough. So.
And school choice came around 25 years ago and sort of school districts started making up their own rules. And, uh, on what they wanted to do and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed came out two years ago and clarified for every community. This is what school choice is. This is how it operates in every community. If you choose to be a school choice district, you choose to live by the rules that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed dictate.
Got it.
They're guidelines, but they're dictates.
Other questions? Anyone in the audience have a question? All right, we'll continue my.
I will move on then. Uh, summer programs update. I just wanted to give you a quick update on everything that's going on in the district. I wanted you to mention that summer splash continues to go on. It's going very well. Ms. Christie Goldman and Mr. Scott Dawson are the coordinators of that program uh, under the direct, directorship of, of Dr. Melanie Gates. And they're doing a really nice job down at the elementary school. That's housed at Berkland. We do have the, also the credit recovery programs at Nichols Middle School and Middleborough High School. Those are run by Mr. Scott Redpath and Mr. Sean Kinney, both members of each, each of the faculties. So Scott Redpath is a member of the Nichols Middle School faculty and obviously Sean Kinney is at the high school. We have our extended school year special needs program that's going on at the MEK. That continues to move along. Trish Ferretti is a preschool teacher who coordinates that every year. Carolyn Lyons sort of supervises it, but really doesn't need to do very much because Trish Ferretti does a real nice job. We have the performing arts boot camp that's going on, um, and those weeks one and two uh, are currently finished in the books. And I would tell you that again, from a personal note, my daughter was in both week one and week two and enjoyed it very much. They had a concert today and a family barbecue. I didn't get a chance to make it there today, unfortunately, and I'm probably gonna catch heck tomorrow morning. But, uh, that was going on. So all of those programs that I just mentioned are obviously free of charge to, to all students with a grant that we received from the Department of Elementary Ed. They give it and they take it away. So about an $82,000 grant and we match them with our Escher money, uh, Escher two money. Uh, and, and Sarah's gonna talk about that in a minute. We also have our Champions Be Hope For and After School program, which is a pay-as-you-go childcare program, which is going on in the Berkland. And working in concert with every other program that's going on, a lot of those students are going into the summer splash activities and then coming back out to go to, back to champions. And that's going well. I did visit that program the other day and the kids are happy and they're, 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 um, really having a good time learning. Uh, there's some STEM activities going on all the time and they're outside and they're having fun. Uh, we did take the tent that was over at Mary Kay Good and we moved it over to the Berklands. We have double tents over there now for some shade, some additional shade. So those summer programs are, are going well. We're happy that the folks and the teachers and everybody's willing to do that. We did, as you know, uh, include a 10% differential in, in pay for them to, to convince them because we're, we're concerned that we would not get the number of teachers required to run those programs. Uh, and that, that did help. Uh, obviously that's not in their contract. It's not something we need to negotiate with them. It's something that was outside of the contract. They're volunteers to work in the summer. They get paid to work. But they have to volunteer to get on that list of, of faculty. So, um, that's what's going on in the summer. A lot of things going on. And, and I would invite any member of the committee, if they'd like to make an appointment with me and, and go visit and take a walk around, uh, to the different programs at any time. Just give me an email. Um, next week looks good for me if you're interested. Uh, I'll certainly entertain anyone that wants to take a, take a ride around or even just going to the Berkland school, you'll take care of, of really a couple of programs at once and then going up to high school, there'll be more. So, and obviously we could take a little tour around. So you're welcome to do that. Any other questions from anyone?
Meg.
There's a couple of comments online. Um, people just are really appreciative of all the summer, the summer splash, the, um, performing arts, um, the extended school year. They're really loving all those programs.
Good. Good. I'm glad to hear that. Good.
Rich Oakley has a question.
Mr. Oakley.
Um, thank you very much. It sounds awesome. I'm excited that all that's going on. I was curious, what is the, just in very round numbers, doesn't have to be exact at all. What's the approximate number of kids that are in middle row schools this summer for programs?
Boy, I, it's week by week, so I can get your numbers, but I would say we're talking about 300, 350. But I can do week by week numbers for the next meeting to sort of give a summary report at the next meeting of exactly how many we're in. Because the first two weeks involved grade five through 12, uh, musicians, people that were doing instrumental music. I don't believe the third week is instrumental music. I think it's more performing arts and the black box and the stage. But these young people are coming up to a beautiful new high school, um, excited about walking in the door. I mean, it's pretty cool, pretty cool, uh, experience for them, I think. I know it is because again, speaking from personal experience. So. And the splash is, is the Berkland and, and, uh, and, and the kids are having a great time there. And we were happy to have a number of teachers who, who stepped up to, to work in that program. So, in all of the programs, really. So.
Excellent.
And they're not required to do that. So they're stepping up. They, obviously they are paid, but they're not required. So it's, it's nice for them to do that. So we do appreciate that.
Excellent. And, uh, Mr. Chair, through you, um, I was just kind of looking for a broad number. I don't want to make you do any more work, but I'm, that's great. I'm excited to hear that.
Let's know more. We, we always get a summary of the programs at the end. We get evaluations of the programs at the end and, and then we, do we try to do better, uh, based on those evaluations. So those, that will all take place at the end of, end of the year.
Excellent. Thank you.
Super. And if there are no other further questions, anybody from the audience? Have any questions or comments? No? Okay. I would move on to the elementary and secondary school emergency relief grant fund. It doesn't sound too exciting, Escher two, um, but it has been exciting for the district. It allows us through federal money to really add some things to boost up some things that are going on. And I would defer to Sarah Hickey now, our business and finance manager, who's going to describe with a slide presentation exactly where we are with the federal Escher two grant. As you know, we had Escher one, we have Escher two, you know, the Escher three on the way. So we've really been able to do some boosting in the school system to reduce some class size, to do some nice things. And you'll hear, hear all about it. Ms. Hickey.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Lynch, and thank you for having me, school committee members. This, I, I am privileged to be able to talk about exciting things to you. The federal coronavirus relief programs, the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, it sounds pretty, pretty boring. But Sean, if you could go to the next slide, please. I highlighted the first initials. So the E S S E R, we call this the Escher grant. And I've spoken to you before about the Escher one program. That was a grant that we had last year. We were just approved for our Escher two grant on July 1st. And I'm, again, I'm very excited about this. Next slide, please, Sean. So what is this grant? The Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Securities Act, or the CARES Act, which was a $2.2 trillion economic stimulus bill and the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, which was a $10 billion supplemental, um, fund. Provide resources to school districts to address the impact of the novel coronavirus disease and the impact that that's had and continues to have on elementary and secondary schools. Sean, could you do the next slide? Thank you. So the Escher one grant, which we've spoken about in the past, the, that grant was approved for us in August of 2020. And it, the funds for that are available to us until September 30th of 2022, and that was an amount $364,274. The Escher two grant, which I'm going to be talking to you about tonight, was money that's available to us from July 1st of 2021 until September 30th of 2023. And the amount Middleborough's, um, Middleborough's allocation from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for this grant was The Escher three grant that I put on there, which we don't currently have the money yet. I'm in the process of working on that grant. It is due October 4th to the state. Uh, the money for that would be available between October 4th, 2021 and September 30th of 2024. And the Escher three grant will be $2,927,303. So this is money that the federal government gave to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has, um, parsed out to school districts. We went through the grant writing process where the, um, the grant request for proposals gave us 16 categories of how the money could be spent. And the next slide, I'll start to tell you about. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm a, I was a slide ahead of myself. So this is, uh, this is supplemental funding. And it was, there are the 16 specific categories, but there are three broad categories to how the money can be spent. So the, uh, money can be spent to help school districts safely reopen schools. It can be spent to measure and effectively address significant learning loss. And then to build capacity of public school districts and communities to facilitate integrated coordination of school and community-based resources for student mental health services and supports. Next slide, Sean. So one of the best ways to think about this grant is the money is in three buckets. There's an academic bucket. There's a social emotional bucket and an operations budget, uh, bucket. And the academic bu- bucket is for gauging and addressing unfinished teaching and learning. The social emotional bucket is for mental health supports. And then the operations bucket covers COVID prevention and response measures. And then, um, improvements to buildings, for example, like ventilation, things that we need to mitigate future issues. The, um, so when this grant was written, the principals all communicated a list of requests for those 16 categories. Those requests then went into approval and the, um, the amount of money allocated from this grant for academics was $569,668. The amount that was allocated for social, the social emotional bucket was $228,000. And the operational bu- bucket, sorry, was $466,500. I would like to strongly emphasize that in the grant RFP, in bold letters, it says a minimum of $10,000 must be used on student mental health services and supports. So we're.
Got that covered.
We're, yeah, we're directed by the state to spend $10,000 and Middleborough is spending $228,000. So these, um, just let me talk a little bit about the types of things that, um, so in the academic bucket, that $569,000 is going to be going for additional positions. It's paying for the summer programs we're having. It's paying for curriculum work. So, uh, and after school tutoring at the complex. So there's a wide variety. The additional positions are put in in order to reduce class sizes where we need to reduce class sizes or to increase support where we currently need additional support. In the social emotional bucket, um, there are additional positions. Superintendent Lynch mentioned earlier, we are adding a school adjustment, uh, part-time school adjustment counselor at the Memorial Early Childhood Center. We are adding a school psychologist for the middle and high school, um, to help take some, take the edge off the caseload for testing. The.
To free up the school psychologist to work with small groups and.
Yes. We, we have school adjustment counselors that are currently doing work throughout the summer, doing wellbeing checks and, and connecting with families. In this, um, there's a new position, a director of social emotional learning and family engagement. And then it, along with that, there's, um, the different budgets to, um, for the new director of social emotional learning to be able to run the programs. You can't just hire somebody and say, have at it. In the operations budget, there is some technology expenditures. The big number in the operations budget is the the replacement of the HVA system at the Memorial Early Childhood. Part of the grant proposal had to be a pre-approval of this capital expense. But that is something that we need to do, and in order to have adequate ventilation in that building. The operations also covers funds to maintain existing staff. So I've allocated half of the salary of our district nurse leader to the operations part of this grant, and we are adding a half-time float nurse to the district to help with whatever may come.
All of these positions that are being hired under these grants are being labeled as such, that they're grant-funded positions. And the folks that are being hired understand that when this funding, ESER one, ESER two, ESER three runs out in 2024, that these positions, if we cannot fund them in the operational budget, will go away. So there will be a reduction in force. It does allow us the luxury of bringing in some people that normally would love to have onboard, that we just haven't been able to afford to have onboard. And this has allowed us to do that. So, and then moving forward, obviously, there's another big bucket, or three buckets coming for ESER three that we're going to look at in moving forward, so.
Mr. Chair, thank you, first of all. This is phenomenal. But my question regarding the sixteen categories is all of this money that you have been, this grant has given us, is that as much as they could have given us? Like, did you did you meet all of the criteria so that you wouldn't have been able to get more than you got? Or I'm just curious how that all works.
This was not a competitive grant. So the, for example, the summer school expansion and engagement grant that I spoke about at our last meeting, that grant, we were eligible for up to $100,000. It was a matching grant, and we were only matching $81,500 of it. This is the federal government gave the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education a chunk of money, and they, I shouldn't say that. That's not very professional, but that's what happened. And the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed gives us our allocations based on largely the Title I formula.
So basically, if you write the grant and you ask for money, you're going to get the money?
They approve it. They have to approve it.
Right. So we have to write the grant in accordance to how they want it spent. So the, you know, I had the money amount for the ESER three grant. That's going to be what we're going to get. We're just sorting out how we're going to spend it within the guidelines of how they need it to be spent.
Well, thank you for taking the time to do that, because I'm seeing very, very many districts across the state that have not taken the time to do that. So I appreciate all of the time that you've
It was not due, Teresa, till July 30th. July 30th. But we wanted to get it in to make sure we had the money to match the summer program, so we could offer it at no charge.
Yeah, well done.
Sarah took a step up and jumped in early, so, which is important. I also want to mention, she did say it, but I want to say it again, yeah. I did, I want to mention it, that it is based on our Title I funding formula, so it's based on our number of students with free and reduced lunch. And that number is really important to us. It also is an indicator of our town, the wealth of our town, and towns that don't have as much money as other towns get more money from the federal government with regard to this. So we're fortunate in that we're in that case for this money, and we're making sure that money gets to those, gets to those
Thank you.
Communities.
Meg, go ahead.
Thank you. There's a question from online. They were just wondering if we've used all of the money from the SR one?
We have not. So all of the money for SR one is obligated. I apologize. I don't have my notes of how it's, when the grant was written a year ago, it was divided up that this much was going to be salaries and this much was going to be PPE. And we're still spending the SR one grant.
Thank you.
And the SR one was really used more for safely opening the schools last fall. So that was the push. So anything that, if you think of, that we had to pay extra, that was over and above our budget for the most part, that's where we picked up a lot of that. Now, I think the other piece with the ESER grant was that while we may have planned to spend money with the ESER grant, we also were able to use Plymouth County and their relief funds. So we had to, we're kind of operating both at the same time, if you will. So seeing that we could, whatever we could move over to the Plymouth County, we would, and that would extend more money from the ESER grant. So that's part of the reason why it hasn't been spent fully.
So that was a fourth source of funding for those folks in the audience, was the Plymouth County CARES money. And that money, we have continued, that money paid for 2,000 Chromebooks. That money paid for a lot of the extra work required to finish courses at the high school and create the schedule at the high school. So that was a very fortunate piece for us. A lot of communities, that money was intercepted by Plymouth County. We were initially a little bit worried about if we'd get our share of it, because a lot of the money, the rest of the money in other counties went to the Department of Ed, and they sent out allocations at $225 a student. Well, we've received a lot more than $225 a student because of Plymouth County sort of intercepting that COVID CARES ball. And we've taken advantage of it. So not taken advantage of it, we've utilized it appropriately.
So the other thing, too, is in this building, any additional COVID issues that we had, for example, for a long time, we had a nurse on site taking temperatures of the construction workers coming in here. We had to do several setups that were different and weren't planned. All that was funded by the Plymouth County money, because we could add that to this project and take it away, so that the taxpayer wouldn't have to pay it directly as they do.
And we don't have a final number on that, Mr. Chair, but it's upwards in the hundreds of thousands of dollars to have a special safety tent here every single day for all the workers that were coming in or who were coming in to the project. And Plymouth County COVID CARES Act money paid for that, so it's been good, so.
If I could just say one more thing about all of this money, the grants are written so that a school system can spend money back to March 13th of 2020. And we are so fortunate as a district that we're not having conversations about taking money that was available yesterday to pay bills from a year and a half ago, that we are able to look at this money as supplemental money to help us move forward with really good work that needs to be done with the students in the community. And the community is very supportive of the school system, and I'm thankful for that, that I'm not trying to juggle bills from March of 2020 to pay with money that might, will be coming in in October.
And these monies will also allow us to return more money to the town at the end of the year for money that we've claimed under COVID and used under ESER one and ESER two. So that will be, that'll be a plus. That number will be fairly significant this year. Usually, it's in the 10,000 to 20,000 area. Last year was up in the 150 or so. For this year, it could be significantly more than that based on our current numbers that we've seen, so. Any other questions for Ms. Hickey? Any questions from the audience? Question right there. Okay.
Hi, I was just curious. I was trying to follow the whole, how the money is distributed and everything. Is that money that they are giving, I heard the year 2024 thrown out, is that one amount of money to stretch over those years? Or is this amount of money given every year or until 2024?
Sean, could you go back to the slide with the pyramid on it? Because I had put the dates, I had put the dates on that slide.
I saw it real quick and it left, so.
ESER one, ESER two, and ESER three are three different amounts that we'll get in total. So it's ESER one plus ESER two plus ESER three all the way through 2024. And there are spending limitations on each, but they extend it through, so.
Okay. And I was just curious, the things that we're doing for the social emotional supports, the school psychologists for the middle and high, does that person float between both of those schools or?
They will.
And is it part-time or a full-time or?
Part-time.
Part-time. Thank you.
Yep. So that person was designed through the PPS department, and Carolyn Lyons had asked for that person to come in and actually do some testing of students. As you know, each child that's referred for special needs has to go through a battery of tests. So those school psychologists will be doing that testing, so that our school psychologists are here every single day. We'll be able to free up and work with groups and work with students.
Okay, great. Thank you.
If there are no other questions, I will move on. My final note for the evening is the administrative retreat. I just want to let you know that on August 3rd, 4th, and 5th, there's a lot of school systems, again, I was at the superintendent's conference last week, and they're going to Ocean Edge, and they're going here with their administrative teams, and we're going to the Boston Tavern, as usual. So we're going to Boston, but it's the Boston Tavern. So we're going to meet a group on August 3rd and 4th as a smaller group of principals and directors. And then on the 5th, we have the extended group with all the assistant principals and the coordinators. And on that day, we do have a luncheon there at the Boston Tavern, and I want to invite the school committee to join us, if you'd like to come join us. Usually, the chief of police and the fire chief come by, or a couple of representatives from each department. The chair usually flies, and that's a little, just a little buffet that we have with some chicken and some fish. But it is a chance for myself and the administrative team to plan for next year and to look exactly where we're at with hiring. We do have some positions that we're going to fill. You heard Mrs. Latander. She has some positions. We did have so far, just about a total of 28 people who've either retired or resigned this year. Higher, a little higher than we expected. We knew there was going to be some retirees, and that was a matter of course, when somebody reaches the end of their career. But there are also people that were like, I'm done. This is it. Some exhaustion there, and they moved on. And some have moved on to different situations where they're closer to home and things such as that. So a total of 28 people over the course of the summer or the spring and the summer had to be replaced. And we're just filling in the last couple of people. One was our Russian teacher. Unfortunately, he only stayed one year. He moved on. His wife was relocating her job to California. And so that was a loss for us, but we think we have a candidate coming in tomorrow for a final interview. And when you look across the country, high schools to teach Russian, it's not, it's not a lot of teacher preparation that goes in to teach Russian in high school, because there are so few. So I think we're fortunate to find, we think we've found somebody that's going to hopefully sign on tomorrow. Looking forward to that. So those are the jobs that we're looking to fill now. A couple of science, a couple of positions here at the Nichols, or at the Nichols. And Mr. Brannigan's working hard up there to work on getting our Russian teacher and an English teacher, right, Mr. Brannigan? One more English teacher, and then we're set, right, at the high school? Yes. So we're almost set at the high school. A little more work at the middle school, and we're going to be able, through the ESER grant, to reduce some class size at a couple of grades where the class sizes were approaching 23, 24, 25 at the elementary, and reduce some of those numbers with some additional hires, so. Thank you. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. Next item on our agenda is school committee subcommittees. I sent everybody a list. I just want to point out a couple of things in the list. And the superintendent evaluation subcommittee, Meg's the chair, but Rich O is on that committee. I forgot to add the important O. The other thing, too, is I just want to point out again, I'm the chair of the negotiation subcommittee. Greg will join me. This year will be a negotiating year for all our unions. It is my intent that Greg and I will probably first do the teacher's contract, and then, as we do other contracts, I'm going to bring pieces of you on to each one of those contracts, so you get a sense of how to negotiate and what to do. At some point, before we do that, I will hold like a workshop session for you all about negotiations, one-on-one, so you understand what's entailed. It will be fun, and we can go from there. We do have a good time, for the most part, negotiating. With the teachers' union, we, what was the, it used to be win-win, and I always could say win-win, but
Interest-based bargaining.
Interest-based bargaining. So we went through a course. That turned out really well, I would say. And having conversations with both sides, both sides enjoyed that bargaining better than what we have done in the past. We'll continue to use that. We'll bring in a mediator who essentially runs the meeting and just oversees the discussions. The biggest difference in interest-based bargaining, in my opinion, has been sort of in the traditional bargaining, you go in separate rooms and you come back, and you're just throwing out numbers, and this gives you a chance to talk more about issues and why issues exist, and maybe trying to find ways to solve the issues, not necessarily always through the contract. So that was very, very helpful. So I've sort of mixed it up. So everybody has a chair, and everyone has members of committees. So I hope everyone likes it. I tried to give everybody everything they asked for. Everyone sent me, so we'll go from there. Okay. As far as the middle school, the Middleborough High School building project, the old high school is gone. It does no longer exist anymore. We are still on track for the October date that we will take over fully, where the parking lot will be in, the additional fields, the tennis courts and everything like that will be in and ready to go.
We're into that phase now.
Yeah.
Phase six, correct? Phase six.
Phase six. We are still under budget by several million dollars. And things continue to go that way, so we're very, very happy. And any questions about the high school project at all? Any questions from the audience? I'll be happy when that's off the table. I will say that.
It's like the mech roof. It was on for about three years.
The mech roof stayed forever, because we just had one small leak that they could never find and fix. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Chair wants to motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
They're here a second.
Second.
Just so everyone knows, the consent agenda is just warrants that we've had to sign over the period since our last meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. The only other thing I want to point out to everybody is that the superintendent and I met with the planning board, a group meeting between the planning board, the zoning board, and the selectmen meeting, because they wanted to talk to us about 40R.
40R.
40R is a new zoning potential piece that will be on the October ballot, October special town meeting. It pertains to the terrain area around the train station. We were asked to come in and talk about what new growth does for us as far as bringing in students in. And I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, if I remember the numbers correctly, in a new apartment complex, we generally get point two.
Point two students for a two-bedroom and point four students on average for a three-bedroom.
And then for a housing development, we're ending up at point
four. Yeah, point four, approximately point four, point four, five. Those were numbers that they had. But 40S is the funding piece of 40R. And 40S also says that if you're a foundation community, which we are, we meet our foundation budget every year. The town actually is generous and goes over the foundation budget by about 11% or so, 12% each year. Then they're saying you're comfortable enough to adjust to additional students in your school, and you will not get any additional funding. So there's no additional school funding that comes in with 40Rs if you're a foundation budget town, which we are. So there's really no financial incentive, but the town has to make that decision based on. And the planning board was going back and forth and talking about potentially how many apartments we would bring in and where they would be. And so that is something they continue to debate. So if you're interested in that, the planning board does meet, I believe, almost weekly at this point, to talk about, and this continues to be on the agenda. I got a call from the planning board today with some additional questions, so.
And the, those discussions will be happening more and more with different town departments, because it'll affect them. Although the monetary gain for the schools is not there, it doesn't mean that there's not a monetary gain for the town in other areas. So that's the other pieces that they have to start to look at. Any other questions before I accept the motion to adjourn? Meg, go right in.
There were just a couple of comments that I think people had gotten in after a public comment.
Sure.
So there was a couple of questions about lunches, and if we could kind of talk about the lunch menu, maybe revamping that. I'm not sure at which school.
I think they just want to have it be a topic of discussion on the next agenda. So how would they go about getting that on the agenda? That's all they're asking.
Okay. Certainly, Rebecca Bagnello is due to us. She was scheduled to come before us in June and could not make it, so we can try to schedule her for August. Talk about those things. I know that things maybe got a little boring last year with bag lunches. So maybe, I think that when we sort of go back to some level of normalcy, they will continue to have more à la carte items at each school and things such as that, so. So, um, I think people are tired of the bag lunches, but they were all free, which was the benefit of that. So, uh, I know that the summer program, our program was approved, and we are, we have provided lunch for all of our students in the summer, uh, at no cost. That continues to be something that is, uh, an indirect cost or, uh, from the federal government that's taking care of that. Outside of ESER one, ESER two, ESER three, the federal government is providing that and has provided that since closure last March 20th. And we've had free lunches for that entire time, including summertime.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
And also related to lunches too, we've sort of, the, obviously, the, we've not brought in any money-
Right.
-for the lunch program. So we've actually been behind in some respects, because even though the lunches are free, um, and they're paid for by the federal government, we would also make money off of all the other snack pieces and stuff like that that kids were getting more frequently.
Right.
That they're not getting as frequently.
And through you, Mr. Chair, uh, ESER two also allows us to subsidize that program a little bit to keep it going, um, because that's a self-sustaining program. And thankfully, the town takes care of the benefits packages for those ladies that work in the cafeteria. And we, it's a break-even program, we sometimes, we, we do a little bit better than that. But this past year, that, with the federal money, just, they're basically giving us back the money that we put in the bag-
Yeah.
-uh, which is not the money that we collect generally.
Right. So, any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments from the audience before I close out? Seeing none. Chair wants to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Right here, second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, thank you, everybody. And we look forward to seeing you at the end of August, like I said. Unless there is, um, some different guidance from the state, then we'll have a separate meeting about that. But other than that, thank you very much, good night.